Okay, everybody stand please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna approve of minutes for the regular meeting of 2/2013, just a work session. Number two is the payment of claims for March 8th and March 20th. We have received our financial reports for the month of February. We have three communications. We have 4A is our RFP results received on 3/13/13 for environmental engineering services. We have engineer's, the engineer's report dated March 18th.
Mary, would you like to make any arrangements in my report?
Sure.
Just a couple of quick things. The road project on 67th Street, the DOT said we could go out the bid. So we're going to schedule a bid advertisement April 9th with a bid opening on April 30th. Hopefully put a order at that May meeting and start the construction after that. The pool renovation project, which is Green Acres funded, we're actually going out the bid next week, which is March 28th with a bid opening April 10th. And hopefully if everything comes in okay, we could award that at the April meeting. And the parks project, Phil Martin Dewey's moving along. We fear we have a couple more weeks at least on that. The weather hasn't been that great, but they've been working. Fear the middle of April, they should be closing in on finishing that up.
What's happening with the arena and the rumors you're posting about McDonald Park?
Lettuce Park?
Yeah.
We finished the geotechnical test warrants and we're working on the reports now. Once those are done, we'll start the structure.
A question. With the, with the pool, do they have enough time to open remotely?
Well, I talked to Joe DiMarco. And what we're going to do is do as much work as we can to not disrupt the pool opening. And then, I guess it's only open on the weekends until school's out.
Correct.
So we're gonna work during the week at those times. Hopefully get it done by when school is out.
Okay, foresee we are presentation by Marsha on the CFO regarding budget and general obligation bond sales. She does the presentation.
Oh, you want to do that now?
Oh, okay.
So this is just in continuation of our discussions that we've had over the last several months pertaining to the introduction and adoption of the 2013 budget as well as the capital bond ordinances for 2013, which will culminate in a general obligation bond sale sometime in the mid-spring. So what I've done here is I've taken the opportunity to just introduce you to some of the additional procedures that will take place within the next couple of months. In your handouts, I've attached a schedule, a financing schedule, it looks like this. So you can just turn to that sheet. It gives you each of the dates that are relevant in starting with what we did last month on the applications of the local finance board, which by the way was successful. We were given approval to proceed with all of our transactions.
Explain to them, Mark, what that means, how big of an event it was.
Well, it was a big thing, deal, because what we were financing in most part was the seven and a half million dollar debt maturity that was coming due June 15th this year, which was basically what I refer to as the balloon payment, the sale leaseback transaction of the DPW garage from 2008. So when that transaction was finalized, they required us to pay this sum of money back. And so in order to do that, we had to re-acquire the interest of the Hudson County Improvement Authority in order to effectuate the sale and retain title to the building. However, the local finance board was truly unhappy with the fact that this transaction got by them five years ago in that there was this lump sum painted due. So if it not were, if it weren't for the fact that none of the parties at the table, meaning the representation on behalf of the commissioners and the administration, were not part of that process in 2008, we clearly would have most likely had some penalty. What that penalty would have been, we can't speculate. But needless to say, we were very fortunate in getting the approval to now have this bond sale here so that we can now take it back, the building, and move forward. There are some things that I have to do in compliance to complete that transaction. So moving forward with that, and then of course they approved our two ordinance for the capital improvements for 2013, which includes the purchase of the DPW interest and some various equipment repairs to different buildings that we own, et cetera. What we will need to do in order to, as a body, make ourselves whole before the bond rating agency and the investment community is at the meeting next month on April 17th, I don't have a formal policy, which I also have attached in the handout, which we will all be compliant with. And it doesn't indicate, this was drafted by myself, the financial advisor, and the bond castle. We probably will have to sign this document, but essentially what we're committing to is a very austere budget policy going forward from this year forward. And there's no reason for me to believe that we cannot live within these means. This puts our standing in the investment community in a very high posture. So by taking this stance and implementing and adopting a town policy and management statement, which I attach you, you can read it, and you know, we'll of course talk about it next month in the workshop session for your formal action next month. So that's very important, because this is something that we, you as a body have to take the formal action and vote for. But I, as the CFO, have to make sure that this gets implemented.
So now the worst, our credit rating is terrible. Which we inherited from the fires.
Correct. We lost, we had a junk bond status up until maybe two years ago, and the bond rating agency pulled the rating because the former CFO was not compliant in filing with the repository, simple things like the annual financial statement, the annual audit, et cetera. It's not a difficult thing to do, but it wasn't done and therefore we lost our bond rating. So what may seem like a very simple transaction was just not completed.
So now, three years later, we're still trying to clean out the mess that was left from the prior administration.
Yes, we are definitely in the right direction.
Okay.
And I feel that, so one of the items in here is you'll see, you took, look at the dates where we're submitting on April 3rd, 2013, the initial rating package. So we will put together what's called a preliminary official statement. It's basically the resume of the town of West New York, which will have demographic information, financial information, things of that nature. And this will bring the first attention of either Standard and Coors or Moody's to make a rating on our behalf. I generally work with having them come on site and then meeting with the mayor, the commissioners, certainly economic development, because that's really where their interests are. What is, what is the future of the town? That's what they want to see. So we have to put our positive foot forward. And so that actually, so sometime between April 3rd and May 3rd, which gives us approximately 30 days, we will have the presentation. I think that's scheduled for honor about April 18th to present to them. And then, once we get our rating, we'll be able to step out and sell our bonds. And that's expected to be done on a competitive basis on May 15th. So that's just a framework, so you know what we're, what we'll be putting forth next month will be this formal policy as well as the bond, the form of sale for the resolution, for the form of the sale of the bonds.
Great.
Okay? Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to comment, positive comments from Commissioner Freys and you, so. I'm sure I've read the, what they sent you from friends, and they groomed you guys pretty hard.
Yes.
And I saw the comments they made, and they weren't nice comments, so.
Right, they were not.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have two appropriations. One is honoring John Thomas and Esquire, and honoring Patrick Joseph Corrigan, Commissioner Rodriguez, who'd like to read the appropriations.
Sure.
Now we go to resolution number one in the budget resolution ordinance page. And it's a transfer appropriation reserves. And we have resolution number two is authorizing emergency temporary appropriations for year 2013. Then we have the introduction of ordinance 513, which is an ordinance of the town of West New York in the county of Hudson, New Jersey, calendar year 2013 to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank NJSA 48, column 4-45, 14. And then we're gonna do the introduction of the 2013 calendar year budget. And we start the regular resolutions. R1 is appointment of appropriation of moving bodies as a.
I have a question. Explain to me, this cap budget, where I'm reading the ordinance here. And it'll be a 3.5%, you tell me if I'm reading this wrong, are we gonna prove a 3.5% increase?
No.
What is that?
Was the cap, there's two different caps in the state of New Jersey with respect to budgeting and tax levies. One is a cap levy, which is your, is a limit on the amount that you can increase your appropriations within caps. That's the cap level that goes back to 1976 and has been renewed from time to time. What this ordinance does is it gives you an extra amount, if we needed it, to raise the inside cap appropriations to without having to cut back services or lay off. For example, inside cap means, no matter what your revenue is, no matter how much you're willing to raise taxes, if you exceed your within cap, you must reduce that within cap by either cutting the services or laying off personnel. There's no answer buts about it. So what this does is it gives us an extra amount to increase the bank, because it really goes into a non-spending bank. But in the event that we ever needed it, we would certainly be able to pull down that bank. That's basically the difference. And then the other, other cap is the tax levy cap, which has a formula, formal calculation through a workbook where you have, you start with your levy from the prior year. You have certain exceptions that you can take off of that. If you have an increase in your health care costs, if you have an increase in your debt service, those all come off of that, and then you have the percentage of 2% that you're now allowed to raise. And then, it does, it essentially becomes more than 2% effectively, the tax levy. But that's not the business, that's just within appropriations within caps.
Is that considered in each department or overall?
It's in total. It's on, if you look at your budget document here, it's. It's on sheet number 19, your total general appropriations within cap. So if, let's say you had, your cap calculation came out to 47 million period, we would have to actually cut the services and the appropriations, which basically comes down to laying off personnel to the tune of $900,000. So this bank allows us to increase the amount that we can not have to cut the actual expense. But we don't have any inside cap type of bank on that.
Resolution number one is appointment of Commissioner Ruben Vernis as a member of the management committee of the North Hudson Region of Fire and Rescue. R2 is authorizing an interlocal agreement between the town of Bayonne and the town of West New York for the position of a health officer. R3 is creating a social media policy. R4, Hudson County Board Tax Appeals. R5 is a tax correction. R6 is refund of tax overpayments. R7 is refund of tax lien premiums. R8 is state court tax appeals. R9 is tax lien redemptions. R10 is authorizing the town of West New York to seek fair and open process and compliance with the pay-to-play statutes of the retention of various legal professional services. R11 is honoring Pablo Duarte. R12 is the 2013 summer food service program grant application. R13 is 2014 HTS federal highway safety grant application. R14 is 2014 HTS state pedestrian safety enforcement and education fund grant application. R15 is authorizing the town clerk to advertise to receive bids for the 67th Street Road Improvements from Kennedy Boulevard to Palisade Avenue. R16 is appointing Miguel Borrego as a Class 4 desgini of the planning board to fill the unexpired term of Clara Duran. R17 is approving a professional service agreement for services of environmental engineering services to Bird Soul Services Group. R18 is awarding an emergency contract to PRS Consulting aimed to complete the summer food grant application. R19 is establishing restricted parking in front of one resident for the use of handicap. 6609 McKinley Place for John R. Newman. We have one, another one in 127 66th Street for Anthony Mack. Another one, 6504 Hudson Avenue for Aristides Rodriguez. And 6110 Jefferson Street for Fernando Martín. And 5006 Hudson Avenue for Josenia Flores. Then we have R24, which is a repealing resolution adopted on 52108, restricted parking for a handicap resident, as follows, 5401 Palisade Avenue for George Pan. And R25 is appointing, appointment of Jeffrey M. Santini and Wendell Holmes as constables of the town of West New York.
I have a question. R18? Is that the same group that started the process for summer?
Yeah. We just have to formalize it. He's gone to all the meetings. We're looking to get what we got last year, which is about $110,000, I think, in summer food grant money. The application's already been submitted, it will be this week.
Okay.
It's just formalizing, or giving me the authority to sign the agreement.
I have a question. As far as our legal professionals and stuff like that, I'm looking at here, public information services. I just want to go through that. What would that be, what particular services? That we're, we need to attain an attorney for that?
Excuse me? Asking me?
I'm asking the attorney.
Oh, sorry.
As far as our legal aspect, what are the professional services that we're looking to acquire? Public information services. I just want an explanation of what that's about.
That doesn't have anything to do with the law. Joe, would you interpret everything?
You have a resolution, you know, to ask for these particular services that I'm looking to inform you.
That's not an attorney service, that's a public information services. What it says.
What would that be?
That would be someone who would take care of our public relations.
Public relations.
Yes, sir.
In regards to what?
In regards to public relations of the town.
So what would that be, spokesman?
It can be a spokesman, it can be the person who writes the letters to constituents, it can be many things.
I thought you had somebody like that already.
We did, and the contract expired.
Expired?
Yes.
Okay, what, who was that?
December 31st.
Who was that?
Who was that, any of the company, Matt? Right.
So that was, so the other gentleman, which is then that was here?
It was not a gentleman, it was a lady.
Why not, there was another gentleman from Latin, he was also. He was involved with Louis Alomar, yes.
I don't know.
But we don't know who he is. He was the gentleman that was brought down in an investigation by the state of New Jersey.
Is that him?
He was standing in this room for the 77th month, am I right?
Oh, you mean Pablo Fonseca, is that what you're referring to? The man that you made an allegation that he had been involved in some investigation?
It was funny that it happened the week after though, huh? Yeah, you forgot about that. So when you, are you looking for?
There's nothing, no record about that.
Who are you, was in the newspaper. Who are you looking for now to take that place?
Whoever applies, the mayor will make the decision.
So we've also upgraded our social website, or town website, which then requires content to be monitored and upgraded and displayed. So I would imagine that person would have some duties with regards to making sure that the website is up to date, the content that's on it, descriptions, to help each commissioner write the description of their department. So it was something that Commissioner Freys had started a while ago, once she was in public affairs, that we finally met with Alpha Dog, and he has a new program. So part of that will require whoever that person is to fill that content in.
And that wasn't part of Alpha Dog's contract to do that?
It, it's a supplement that we had approved, I think at the last meeting, or. It's just a, it's a minor upgrade. They, they had, we have the older version of their website. If you go on other towns that they have, they have a newer, better version that has more pages and more information. But they don't write the content, they post the content. We would have to supply the content.
And the legal liability special counsel?
We feel that we need, we only have one legal liability special counsel, and sometimes they can be conflicted. So we feel that we need more firms to apply, so we can have a broader range of lawyers to make determinations as to who we're going to hire, given special cases.
Who's our legal liability specialist now?
Florio and Kenny.
Florio and Kenny. All right, I got, this is something that got my attention, zoning board attorney. Now this is our third occasion, we didn't have any people come to the park to take this position at all.
Yes, we did, and now we have a potential conflict with our zoning board attorney, because they also represent the parking authority. And there may be some issues when a developer that is doing business with the parking authority may come here, so that would create a conflict, and that lawyer would have to excuse themselves. And therefore, we need an alternate attorney to represent the board in those situations. That's the reason why we're doing this.
I just, as a commissioner, I think that, you know, we should avoid having to give multiple contracts to multiple people in the town. Okay, because like you said, it can be a conflict with the town, or whatever it may be. I think you should do more responsible with that, not to award the same person over and over again.
We, we have it. One of the great things about most of these professional contracts, most of the new, the great majority of the people that are representing the town now are new people.
I understand, just trying not to repeat it, for more than one place, whether it's the parking authority or any other autonomous party.
That, that's correct, but remember that the parking authority is an independent agency, and those attorneys were there way before these attorney came in as our zoning board attorney. And the zoning board attorney joined that firm during his time as zoning board attorney. He was in another firm before. So we made sure when we initially accepted him as our attorney, that there was no conflict. Unfortunately, now, a conflict has a reason we have to deal with.
Now the other one is the public defender. Do you have a public defender now, President?
We have a public defender. Our RFU has been, it's over since December. We waited to go out for public defender, because we amended the ordinance to the law department to allow for an alternate public defender. Because in the past year, we have experienced some scheduling conflicts, whereby the public defender was not able to make it that day. And we did not have a contract with anyone to come in and take over. So we want to make it official. Same thing for alternate prosecutor. We only have one prosecutor, and we are permitted by statute to go out for an alternate prosecutor. For example, when she goes on vacation, this person will take over. If she's sick, this person would take over. And if we do decide to have, to hold more sessions so that we can move our calendar, that person can come in instead.
The other one I want to ask you. We're appointing more members again for the town board. Clara Durant's leading, I guess. I remember that was the governor, right, before I hold on this individual, what is his background? That, why are you chosen? You're a fourth member, I'd like to know this place.
Well, technically, the board, the board as a whole appoints.
He's a classification four, so he doesn't have to have a specific.
He just has to be a resident within the town. The planning board is comprised of different classes. One of them is a representative of this board, I think Carrie sits on the premises, is that right, Carrie?
Yes.
She's a Class 1, 1A, or something, I always get confused. There are officials who are Class 2s, they all serve for different terms, different requirements. But there is training that the state does provide, that planning board members are supposed to. A resident, a Class 4 is just a resident. So there is no skill required besides, or qualification, it's just to be a resident within the county.
Okay, so, so explain to me, how many Class 4s do we have on our board right now?
I think the board's made up of what, you would know better than I would.
I would have, I'm sorry. I tried to say away from those issues.
It's nine members, I think there's four Class 4s, right? Something like that.
Class 1 is the mayor, Class 2 is the commissioner, Class 3 are the.
It might be six Class 4s?
The officials.
Five or six?
So six can actually have a decision on whether a certain project goes forward or doesn't.
Correct.
Right.
But it's the same qualification for being a commissioner, with all due respect, you just need to be a resident.
Well, people don't vote people just because they're resident, obviously. And I'm just asking the mayor, why do you appoint Miguel? You know Mr. Miguel? You don't know, not saying nothing to him? Quiet there, huh? This is a problem? Oh, no, I don't, I don't, I never met him, I just, well, we have to hold on this.
Miguel Borrego, as far as I know, is employed by the town of West New York, West New York Board of Education, as a custodian. He's been doing it for.
Another employee in the town.
He's not employee of the town, he's an employee of the.
Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner Wiley. Well, I just want to tell you something, the reason why, the reason why the mayor is not responding to you is because you filed a harassment complaint against him, and it's pending. And one of your claims is that he either annoyed you, or that you're afraid of him. And if those two are your claims, you shouldn't be speaking to him. Even though we had an official meeting, and perhaps it would be an exception for it. His counsel, his attorney has advised on that to address him. So you can address any other member?
I understand your answer to this, because we have a lot of people, where the 67th Street project took place and was pushed through by people who are unqualified.
You're wrong about that. That project.
The 67th Street project was actually voted down.
That project is.
The 67th Street project was actually rejected by the Bullardies Project. I'm not talking about 67th Department, that's another headache, yourself. Well, they're two different boards. And when I asked the mayor and Gil last, last meeting about, did they know anything about the seller's property? They played like they didn't know nothing.
I actually did not know, I told you the truth. I did not play, I don't play. I told you the truth. I looked at the contracts, learned everything about it after it happened.
Yeah. It's just, it doesn't seem right to me. I don't know where you expect these people to talk in the future here in this.
Is it public to let the speaker?
Not yet.
Well, my question would be, because I was at that meeting. And the planning board had no clue what they were doing. No, I was allowed to.
And they voted it down.
Well, okay, never mind.
All right, so another, again, another person who's employed within the town who's sitting on the board that can be informed, that's how I see it. Instead of getting somebody outside who might have a little knowledge of these things and making decisions on the rest of 50,000 people, should not be, that's the kind of person that should be here that's qualified. And I'll just repeat that again.
Do you have anyone that you would recommend?
And you know, we talked about this at the last time, you promised the people, but maybe we'll create a committee, maybe we'll put something out in public. Carmel told you this is something.
There is something on the website, there is an application. No one has applied, unfortunately.
So this one on the website, you're gonna tell me?
I'm sorry?
This one on the website that you were looking for.
That was an appointment made by the mayor. But you, you know, this is your greatest opportunity to bring people and recommend them to us. And if we say no, then you have a beef.
Well, if I'm the commissioner, I don't know. If I don't even know that this position's coming up, how would you expect me to go out and tell anybody? Or bring somebody to the table? You can, you, yes, we know where we're going with this, to continue the games, but the people need to know what you continue to keep. need to know what you continue to keep doing.
There are now, there are now five board of zoning board commissioners that must, that are off the board. Okay? Because they present a conflict with the statute. Five. I'm letting you know well in advance, please have some people brought to us for that. We can consider them. At the end of the day, the mayor is the one that appoints them. And it's his final decision and his final discretion, but I'm inviting you to be part of the process.
How about this? How about we go further? How about we, uh, we advertise this on our website? We let them know that we are looking for members of the zoning board so people can get involved in the process.
Very good idea and we will do it.
We promised that last time, so. We did promise, you did promise the people you're looking for.
Today, there are five. That's only one. Today, today there are five. Let's go on Monday, talk to Carmel, ask her, she can talk to the website person and advertise. Yes, I agree with you.
I will be sure to bring you five.
That will be, that will be true public participation.
It's a good, good experiment. All right, let's move on to the next thing. The last thing, the last one, I don't know if you got it.
Just for clarification, I just had them send a request to Alpha Dog to work on it. They might not honor it tonight because they might not be working, but sure, it should be very good by ten o'clock tomorrow morning. There will be an announcement that will go up to say that we are seeking members of boards and if anybody's interested, please contact me.
Did you get to the last resolution? I don't know if you finished, you finished everything?
Yeah, I'm a two on this.
I just was curious. I know, when I think of constables, so I'll explain to you the constables.
A constable is a?
I have no idea what it is, but I don't know.
A constable is, my understanding, is a constitutional position that the municipality is allowed to create a constable, that person that's empowered with certain rights, uh, to effectuate lockouts for rent control. So if someone gets evicted, um, the landlord would then call what is referred to as a constable to come to monitor, change the locks, assist in the eviction thing. Police officers refrain from getting involved in civil matters. They deal with criminal matters, but they don't deal with certain civil actions. So if there's a property dispute or seizure such as landlord tenant or things of that nature, that's where a constable would fill that, that void with that need. Uh, they also have certain other rights in terms of serving warrants, uh, time pay orders or things about municipal court, uh, and that's essentially what they get to do.
All right. Well, let's ask this question first. How much are these people going to be paid for this?
There's not a lot of money.
There's no money in life.
The town does not pay out of pocket.
It's a?
How will they be paid?
They get paid by the individual who requires their services. I believe there may be a statutory fee as to what they can be charged, et cetera, by the state. So if you were a landlord and you wanted a person evicted, you recall the constable, I think it's a twenty-five dollar, forty dollar fee. Um, that would be assessed and the landlord would then pay the constable.
Now, normally in a situation, I notice that this happens in the county. Most of these, uh, are resolved because anyone has a valid monthly move of tenant.
Correct.
Not paying, right? I know it's done in the county, though.
It's done in Superior Court.
Superior Court. Um, well, that doesn't get done in this town, obviously, right?
No, but the order gets issued and somehow or another, that landlord with that piece of paper has to effectuate that. Somebody, he usually wants somebody of an official capacity to serve it. A police department never serves landlord tenant warrants. It's not something they would ever deal with or any small claims warrant of that nature.
So, okay, I know, I know there's a lot of people that do this. They have, you can go around with the vans, they give the orders out, they go to the door, et cetera. Is this like a business? I don't understand. You giving them the right to do this business in town?
It's a, it's a service. It's a service. I don't know if I would call it.
So not only gave me the appointment, are they able to, are they open up down the block here across the street and offer constable services?
Correct.
Okay. So this is more of a business, a decision. You're rewarding these gentlemen by, for whatever reason, what the constables here in the town. Now, would the county call these two individuals because everything to do with West New York?
The county could.
They could use anybody they want?
The county can call them and utilize them. Uh, I know from personal experience of being a lawyer, there's a gentleman, Constable Mobile, who works at, uh, Jersey City. And I had clients that wanted a tenant removed. I would call him and make arrangements and he would be near the property or make the owner of the property and he would effectuate the warrant. And, you know, and that would be the process.
And this is, now, when they run space or do anything, this is no expense whatsoever to the taxpayer.
No. I don't even know if Constable Mobile rents space or, I don't know, he still works.
Worked out his house.
I think so.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
I know where he lives.
You know what I'm talking about? Yeah. He's been doing it for years.
Twenty-five thirty, is maybe?
Right? It, that's.
It was with Brown.
Correct.
But that's what he essentially does. He effectuates and, and quite frankly, if you deal with landlord tenant courts, sometimes they'll tell you there is a delay in, in that process. If there's a backlog, when you call him or what have you, there is a delay.
A trivia question. And one constable came from the fifth century when the Byzantine Empire, the constable was the person that used to take care of the horses at that time. So the word came from there and that's how it processed. And for us, it's a, it's a perfect situation because we're gonna have somebody we're not paying for, but are able to bring money to the town, which is fantastic.
How is money brought to the town?
Like, enforcement of warrants, for example. Once they go before the judge, the judge would say, you owe X amount of money, you're here on an arrest warrant. On top of the fine, you now have to pay the constable fees. That's an example.
That's what I was asking you before. So does the money come to the town first and is paid by the town to the constable?
No.
So it'll be paid to the constable and be turned to the town by the constable himself? Anything else?
I mean, it depends. I, I don't know how the court mechanism would be, uh, would deal with that, but it's probably the same, the defendant pays or something to that.
And you, don't we, didn't we have cops usually go around and do warrants and all that?
It depends on the nature of the warrant.
So creating a new position.
There are many warrants that are not being enforced and we hope that this position will start enforcing some of these warrants. And basically, it's a paid taxpayer's money. If you're having to pay this person, they'll bring more revenues to the town. And we save money on hiring additional cops, even though Commissioner Rodriguez is in the process of hiring more cops. Thank you.
Ordinances. We have a hearing, a final adoption of bond ordinance three thirteen. Um, it's an ordinance of the town of West New York, the County of Hudson, New Jersey, providing various capital improvements for the town of West New York and appropriating two, two million seven hundred and thirty thousand, therefore, and providing for the issuance of two million fifty-three in general improvement bonds and notes of the town of West New York to finance the same. And we have the hearing and final adoption of bond ordinance four thirteen, which is an ordinance in the town of West New York, the County of Hudson, New Jersey, providing the position of all the right titles and interests of the Hudson County Improvement Authority under two thousand eight lease and agreement and appropriating, um, seven million five hundred dollars, therefore, and providing for the issuance of seven million five hundred dollars in bonds or notes of the town of West New York to finance the same. And we have an introduction of ordinance six thirteen, which is an ordinance amending chapter one fourteen of the Code of West New York, the consumption in retail premises without a liquor license. Then we have introduction of seven thirteen, which is an ordinance, repealing ordinance number eleven ten, which is entitled, the ordinance amending chapter seventy-six of the Code of the Town of West New York, its personnel. And then we have an introduction of ordinance eight thirteen, which is an ordinance, repealing ordinance forty-one ninety-five, entitled, the ordinance establishing restricted parking in front of one resident for the use by handicap resident at three twenty-seven sixty First Street.
So just explain the, the reason for the last ordinance is handicap parking spaces way back when were done by ordinance. Now we do them by resolution. So to remove an ordinance, the only way to remove it is with another ordinance. That's why that's.
I got a question about, uh, three. No, not three, uh, four, ordinance four. Explain that for me. I didn't draft that one, so I couldn't tell you. Couldn't tell you, I didn't draft that one. You would have to ask.
What about the, uh, truly handle?
Um, that is done. A couple tweaks, a couple suggestions, but I think you can do it by resolution. It is done.
No, I'm thinking about, oh.
I know, it's not on.
Says because of salary policy and employment policy issues must be done by ordinance and not by resolution. That's what I'm, I need to explain.
I believe that by statute of the state of New Jersey, anything pertaining to local government employees and salaries has to be, um, adopted formally by ordinance. Because a resolution technically is from year to year and an ordinance is on the books until six times as it's amended. So it has longevity, you know, an ordinance versus a resolution which dies basically after twelve months.
Now, what is this, as far as, so the service employees, what appointed employees? Like, what is that to be caused to, what is this gonna affect?
It, it, all it does is for, all that salary, it, it can read the actual ordinance, all it does. It deals with, um, personnel problems. It doesn't really address salaries or anything in that effect. It's just a generic, um, ordinance that it didn't deal. Uh, it deals with vehicle usage, uh, the repealment of the personnel section of the ordinance. It's a question.
What is the question? Oh, right. That ordinance, um, was passed June two thousand ten. And I believe, and I have argued, and I am absolutely convinced, that it was passed as a result of the resolution approving the payment to Janet Pasante. Because our argument in court is that such a resolution had to be done by ordinance because the statute says that anything dealing with salary compens, or, or earned compensation has to be passed by ordinance. And I believe that another sneaky move by the Fedega administration, just like they did with the, um, what Chairman Neff called a, um, I don't remember.
A gimmick.
Another gimmick.
Another gimmick, yeah.
Uh, what they did with the, uh, garage, I think they did the same exact thing here. They wanted to pass an ordinance that said, we can do this by resolution after the fact.